Seven o'clock. I'll let that. I will call a public hearing in order. Notice hereby here in order. There we go. Sorry. Huh? We could do the Pledge of Allegiance. It's not on our agenda, but we'll do it. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, we're here for the public hearing on the charter revisions. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Southbury will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, Room 205 at the Southbury Town Hall, 501 Main Street South, Southbury, in accordance with the requirements of General Connecticut General Statute 7-191B, for the purpose of hearing comments on the proposed changes to the charter. Copies of proposed changes are available at the Town of Southbury Town Clerk's Office and on the town's website, www.southbury-cd.org, and all the selectmen's name down there. We'll open it up. If anybody would like to make a comment on the proposed changes, the microphone is on at the podium, and you're welcome to stand up and let us know your feeling about the changes. Yay, Rich, get the ball rolling. Thank you, Rich. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anytime.
Someone's gotta be first at the table.
That's right. Richard Tieto in Southbury, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Just quick, couple of quick comments on the charter changes. I think the, when you look at the items that were listed, I think change in the selectmen's from two-year to four-year for the first level, I think is a good idea. You know, by two years comes, you're just getting started, and it's time for reelection. Four years seems to be reasonable. But mainly, I'm here for the reason of the joining the Planning Commission and Zoning Commission. I've been on the Commission 13 years, Chairman for four, and Vice Chair for like five, and we did go down this same road back in 2017, 2018. I think there was discussion on joining the two Commissions together, and it never really got any legs, so hopefully it doesn't again. But my quick two points are to address the expeditation of meeting by joining the meetings, teams together, as well as the volunteerism. Those are two quick things. We think that joining the Commissions together would definitely be difficult for both teams to be together. Nothing against either zoning or planning, but from our side, there's only a few of us that have tenure, I mean, like 10 years or so on the Commission. A lot of people are still learning the rules of planning, but then to push them into zoning and have to learn all the zoning regulations and educate the zoning team on our side of the spectrum either would make it very difficult for, I think, to move things along. Maybe it'll push the time faster, but when it comes down to it, public hearings will be needed on a bunch of things. Then we would have to refer to zoning, zoning would refer to planning. It's the same team. It would still give us an extra month to delay an application. So, I don't think it'll move the application along, so it's still the same timeframe. That's a concern to me, for one. And I don't think it would be as efficient for everybody to move things along, because what we have now, we have a well-oiled machine on the Planning Commission. Things move along quickly as we can. We move things along, whether it's administratively or through, you know, the regular process. And I think that the volunteerism aspect of it, we just got a couple of new people appointed. Well, you guys appointed Mary Corso Torres last week. That's good. We still have a couple more folks we're working on to get our team up to full snuff. It seems to be a difficult process across, I think, all cities right now, finding people that want to be on Commissions. And we're not the only Commission that's lacking people. I think there's others in the town, I'm sorry, that are the same as well. So, it's, that, I think, is a very, you know, important thing for all the teams to look at. But, you know, people give up their time, you know, to be on the Commissions. So, I think joining the two Commissions together, I think, the Myer's would just not cause, will cause a lot of friction and not cause efficiency for the town folks when we look at applications for zoning and planning together. That's just my opinion, just from what I've seen over the years of applications. I do a lot of pre-application meetings with Jordan and Gary from zoning, so we do a lot of that work already together. But to combine the two teams together, when we talk about the different applications, seems difficult from our end. That's just my opinion on it. So, hopefully, we can kind of keep the team separate. That would be great. Thank you.
My name is Marty Ludorf. I live at 501 West Purchase Road. I am on the Zoning Commission. I am the longest-lived alternative, alternate zoning person I know, but I do show at just about every meeting. And I'm gonna agree about 99.9% with the previous speaker here, but representing the Zoning Commission. And I did speak with, again, to Gary, Chairman of our Commission, and a couple of other, and I texted a couple of other board members, and they were in agreement that if it ain't broke, why fix it? We're running along pretty well. I have not seen many major complaints published in any of the newspapers about any negativity towards either zoning and planning or the Zoning Commission. So, I don't have as long a speech as my previous thing, but those are my two cents.
My name is Nancy Clark. I live at 85 Silver Beach Road in Southbury. And not to one-up you, but I've been doing this for, on planning commissions for 35 years. First in another budding town, and then there as Chairman and their representative to Council of Governments. And then I moved to Southbury, got on the Southbury Planning Commission since the, I don't know, 97 maybe. So, it's been a long time volunteering, campaigning, being elected, and serving. I am opposed to this change also. And I've had the experience in the other town that I, where I was on the Planning Commission, where they did this. They combined the planning and zoning, and I'm still in touch with those people, and they're so sorry they did it. I did some research and found that of 169 towns in Connecticut, less than 25% have tried this. Not all are happy. First of all, it doesn't save, if the purpose is to save money, that won't happen, because what has ended up in other towns' experience and what we project is that because they're separate regulations, there's a different focus, and so it takes longer. I noticed the meetings started going till midnight. The special meetings that had to be held to provide the applicants with a speedier time for their approval or disapproval got worse. I mean, got, yeah, got worse, the time, okay. So, due to the different regulations and varied compliance for each Commission, the approval process actually becomes prolonged and not good for the applicants. The expertise, focus, and experience and regulations are very different and can be contrary and confusing. That's why now the process is, a zoning change will go to the Zoning Commission. They are required then, under 8-24, to send it to the Planning Commission. We make a recommendation back to them, and then they vote. It's a long process for a good reason. The regulations are very different. State statutes require, whether separate or combined, that the town must exercise planning and zoning functions separately, because the regulations are separate. A separate commission statute requires 8-24 communication between the Commissions, even if they're meeting together, when there is a proposed zone change, in order to comply with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Our Plan of Conservation and Development is the guideline for the planning for this town. By statute, we are required, every town, to update it every 10 years. Was it three years ago, I think, we did ours? It's a long process. We do it with professionals. We do it with input from every town agency, complete public input, and come to what we have in place today. Southbury has been using it as, and has an ongoing process to keep the regulation and approval process in tune with all public input from all sectors of both government organizations and full citizenship, resulting in our Plan of Conservation and Development as a required guide by the State of Connecticut. The Planning Commission, however, every Planning Commission in the state is required, it's the Planning Commission, for this 10-year update. So, zoning must refer to planning whenever they're, for compliance with these, with the Plan of Conservation and Development guidelines, whether they're together or separate. If there is, say we didn't do a Plan of Conservation and Development, that would require the state to not be able to, by law, give any discretionary funding to the town for anything over $25,000. And I did say that less than 25% of the towns have separated them, and it's not functional. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Well, thanks. I'm also, so Dominic Fadabene, 52 Ponvy Drive, and I'm also on the Zoning Commission as an alternate. First, I agree with everything Rich, Nancy, and Marty are saying, but more importantly, regardless of what we decide to do, I wanted to voice some other kind of concerns with how this is all happening a little bit. So, I was like, I was recently made aware of the proposal that's taken, excuse me, and have taken the time and, excuse me, the time to research the issue and speak with other community members. As a Southbury resident, I believe any change to our town's structure should be made thoughtfully and transparently, and with the best interests of our citizens in mind. To date, the proposal has been brought to the Zoning Commission for discussion, the proposal, excuse me, has not been brought to the Zoning Commission for discussion or input. And as a sitting member of the Commission, I want to express more of my own concern that such a significant change, a potential change here, really has been done without consideration for those it's impacting, both from the town's perspective and also the citizens of the town. My comments tonight, like I said, I do agree with everything everybody's saying here, but more importantly, my comments tonight aren't about the decision itself, more the process itself. And though I'm not really intending to endorse or oppose the proposal, I really want to make it known to everybody here, to the Commissions, to the Charter Revision Committee as well, about my concerns around this, around what's been happening here. So, I'm particularly concerned that the change is being considered without a full understanding of the town's current needs, the operational challenges we face, like Rich was saying, like Nancy was saying, the requirements of the state and other regulations, and really what best practice structures look like. And again, being on the Zoning Commission, I haven't heard anything from the Charter Committee, really from anybody. I've talked to Jordan, I've talked to other people that are on the Commission, but again, I haven't heard of any research or best practices being shared. While it's true that other Connecticut towns, like Nancy was saying, nearly 25% of the towns have combined these Commissions, that doesn't make it the right solution generally or for the Town of Southbury. So, respectfully, what I'm recommending is more pausing. Again, I'm not recommending a decision on it, but more pausing until we actually have the right review and consideration by the town, like we're doing here with this discussion, but also to share it with the Land Use Department. I know Jordan, somebody that would be able to provide his opinion on this matter. I don't know if he actually has to date, but even the Commissions themselves, this is the one time where I would say getting the Planning and Zoning Commissions together for a conversation might make sense, but more in terms of the expertise of the Commission. Yeah, I've got some other information here, too, but I think that's really the focus of what I want to hit on is just, to me, it was more surprising seeing this come the other day without having heard about it in the past, and then just seeing we're going right into public hearing without any kind of information going to the Commission or the Land Use Department. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to get up and speak on the charter revision? Bob?
Hi, Bob Harrison, Jeremy Swamp Road in town, Member of Planning Commission. Like everyone before me, I'm against the proposal, proposed action of combining planning and zoning. What worries me is, Southbury's prided itself as being a town run by volunteers, and I'm proud of that. And I think that could be placed in jeopardy to a degree. You know, going around town, I haven't heard anybody say, wow, I've got a lot more free time. Let's donate it to the town or donate it here. I mean, we're all screaming. And now the states come through, and they said, okay, you land use boards, you've got to do increased training. I get it, it's for a good purpose, but it's just one more step, one more thing that we have to do all the time. And now you want to combine planning and zoning. We have separate goals, we have separate objectives. Planning meetings typically run an hour, they can run an hour and a half. Well, by adding duties and responsibilities to whether it'd be planning joint zoning, zoning, you know, a combined, it's not going to shorten the meeting by any means. So, that's going to be more commitments to our volunteers. And I would just hate to see people get so frustrated to the point where we start losing even more members. And I know we've got holes in our committees now, and I'm just worried that if we make this process so difficult for our volunteers, we won't be a town run by volunteers anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rick, Rick, you're looking like you'd like to get up and say something.
Richard Santo, live on 159 Bagley Road. I've got two issues. One is the fact that the public safety organizations in town are running a total of over 15,000 calls a year, and there's no oversight commission on them. Police Commission, Fire Commission, EMS Commission, there is a provision for an EMS committee, but there's no oversight over the, all of the public safety organizations. And I think that's a real shortcoming when you're looking at the size of the town and the number of calls that's being handled. My other question I have is the adding of the Emergency Services Director position with no explanation as to what it's for or what the responsibilities are. We have, we have, or there is the provision for an Emergency Management Director or Director of Emergency Management as it's lined out, but what is the Emergency Services Director position to do? I just was curious as to what that is.
Would anybody else like to?
Robin Greenspan, 50 Fox Run Drive. I am a member of the Economic Development Commission and also elected member of the Planning Commission. I had something prepared that I was going to speak, but the Chair, Vice Chair, my fellow Commissioners did outline all the reasons to not merge the Planning and Zoning Commissions together very eloquently. I think what I could offer, though, is kind of the anecdotal case study perspective of what it was like joining the Planning Commission. When I was elected in 2022, it was the year that we were doing the Plan of Conservation and Development. At the time, I was a typical corporate worker, almost on the verge of burnout, 45, 50 hours a week of working, and then spending several nights a week in Town Hall, going over pages and pages of documents that I didn't understand, that I wasn't clear about, that I didn't really even know that that was going to be one of the things I'd be doing on the Planning Commission, and it was a very tough learning curve. So, I'm grateful for how much I learned in a short amount of time, but it was a lot of pressure. Add to that, as Bob said, you know, we have training hours that we need to do. I also went to, there was a land use conference that we all had gone to together. So, it represents quite a bit of time and commitment putting into Planning Commission just from my perspective of when I joined. I can't possibly imagine having to double the amount of what I had to learn during that time and be effective as a Commissioner. There is no way that I could have done planning and zoning with what we were charged with and taking those responsibilities seriously. So, I echo all the reasons that my fellow Commissioners shared, but from a personal volunteer point of view, this would have been untenable for me, and I imagine for other volunteers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have the podium is open, if anybody else would like to speak on changes to the charter revision.
My turn.
Judy, come on up. You should have sat closer.
No. I came back from vacation with bronchitis. Judy Katzmark, 646B Heritage Village. A question came up in my mind after working for another town. Why, when you were considering changing the first selectman from two years to four years, was there also consideration of making all of the selectmen's terms four years on a rotating basis? Normally, you would not put a four-year term together with two-year terms, and so I think that's something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. John, you're here. Kathy? Sure. Thank you.
Kathy Summers, 148 Georges Hill. I have a piggyback on to that question. When I read the charter, and I did pull it up and read all the red text and everything, I agree that I think if you're going to have a four-year term for the first selectman, it should be considered to have a four-year term for the Board of Selectmen. But I'm also not sure why, what the thinking was behind having a four-year term only for the first selectman. But in addition to that, in the highlights of the charter revision was the statement that the losing candidate can no longer bump a member of the Board to become a member of the Board. But when I actually looked in the charter and was reading all the red strikeouts and so forth, I couldn't find that actually contained in there anywhere. So, that's, neither I'm missing it or it's not in there.
Anybody else? John, you're here. Just trying to encourage everybody that came, took the time from their evening.
Excuse my age, right?
It's quite all right, John. Many years of volunteering, we can wait.
Good evening. My name is John Riley. I am a 19-year member of the Town Board of Finance, and I've served in a couple of other ways. And for address, I live at 7 Concord Court. I just want to speak a minute about the opposite side of the planning and zoning thing. Quite some years ago, I chaired a working group that the Board of Selectmen put together to talk about business development and management and so forth in the town. And in talking to the people in the town that come before those boards, the consistent feedback we had was that it is so difficult to get things done in town, having to go before planning, zoning, and wetlands, and having applications thrown back and forth between those boards, okay? And having to pay for lawyers to come in and be there when those boards frequently, because of lack of attendance, cancel their meetings. What we were told is that it would be a lot more, I'm not saying convenient for just the applicants, but also for those involved. And I understand the issue of people on those committees and Commissions want to stay there, but the feedback we had is because of that process and the difficulty of getting things approved over a period of time in Southbury and the cost of coming back with 500 and 800 and $1,000 an hour lawyers, okay, was in essence an impediment to the eventual development and progress of the economic side of the town and therefore on the growth of the grant list that really affects all of our pocketbooks. So, I just wanted to say that as a representative of the other side, that says there are more than one, you know, approach to considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Mike?
Yeah, Michael Carrington, 76 Reservoir Road. I served on the Charter Revision Commission. Before that, I served on the Strategic Planning Commission, and I kind of want to echo a little of John's points that no one's trying to say our planning, our zoning commissions aren't full of wonderful, dedicated people. They work hard, they do a lot of great work, but, you know, we're not hearing a lot from the small business community that has often complained about how difficult it is to get things started in Southbury. I'm not saying we need to combine this, but I think it's a worthy question to put to the voters, as are all of these things. Remember, we don't have all the answers. That's why we ultimately put it to the voters, so we get the pulse of the town. But I do know a lot of people have complained about getting, you know, passed back and forth between the Commissions. To the extent that this could be an idea, there are ways to combine it perhaps that could work well. Maybe we could do a combined planning and zoning where they both meet in Town Hall in separate rooms, or, you know, we keep the same number of people. I think, if I recall correctly, our charter revision cut it from six, it was going to be 12 members, six and six, and I think we cut it to like nine. Maybe we keep it 12. I don't want anyone being like kicked out of their service. I value everybody's service. I think that's another really important part of this town. But there are some difficulties when people try to start developments, businesses, where they do feel like, you know, time is money, you're paying the lease, you've got the lease, you've got the equipment, and, oh, I can't start my business yet, I can't start my business yet, because now I have to go back to planning, I have to go back to zoning, inland wetlands, whatever. So, there is, there is a value, I think, in having Southbury be a good place to start a business. And, you know, part of this is in light of what happened with our Economic Development Director, which I think was extremely short-sighted. You know, we're getting a bad reputation outside of Southbury as a place no one wants to come to. I don't think we want that. So, I don't know if there's a way where we can kind of make everybody happy, but if we can kind of potentially look into how other towns have combined these things in worthwhile ways, where we keep perhaps the different functions. I get it, there's a lot of work involved, and frankly, if this goes to the ballot, I'm not even sure how I'm going to vote on it, but I do think it's something, I want more information, and I was one of the people on Charter Revision Commission. So, I do think it's something that we can still get more time on. I think all of these are worthy questions. I'm a big believer in giving it to the people. So, I hope these questions and more make it onto the ballot in November. I think that would be important.
Thank you. Nancy, you'd like to speak again? Well, we'll get to everybody, but if somebody wants to speak, they have to, I want to keep it going.
I just want to address those points. We felt the same way, the Commission did, so we established this new procedure, and I'm not sure if the public is aware of it, that, two things. There's a pre-application meeting now with staff, which ensures that the applicant checks all the boxes. The reason they have to come back and come back and come back is because they don't have a complete application nine times out of 10. The second thing is that we have established a new procedure with our staff, excellent staff, where if the Commission feels that it's a simple application, has been already vetted, that we vote to give staff permission to go forward and approve it. We give them authority, and that has worked to speed up, because we feel the same way. We must go for the regulations. There's no opinion here. We have to abide by the regulations. So, I think in those three things, we have certainly made progress with what points were brought up today.
Thank you. Joe, you would like to get up and speak?
Just first, Joe Rogero, 245 Skyview, Chairman of Charter Revision. If you have questions about why, I'll stick around, glad to answer some, if that helps, I don't know. Separate from that, I was asked by Selectman Tim O'Neill at the last meeting about why we removed the language for the unsuccessful candidate for first selectman, and I just wanted to clarify something. I responded that the Charter Commission decided to present this to the voters again, which is true. I characterized that the vote to do so was one of our, like many of our internal votes, was not controversial or particularly partisan, but it turns particularly partisan, but it turns out was perhaps more divided than I remembered. I referred back to our minutes to check that vote, and it was six to three, where the Republican members voted for removing that text. The Democrats voted against it, and the two unaffiliated voted to remove it. So just want to be, clarify the record so that I didn't misrepresent what I said to Tim O'Neill at the Board's Selectment meeting. Just want to say that. Again, questions about some of this, we did reach out to all the commissions, committees in towns. We sent messages, emails, asking for input. P and Z was one of the questions. I spoke with the land use folks, so we did a lot of that. We never got a word. So, we did some research with Andy Cog and some other folks. It wasn't done in a vacuum, and we decided that it was worthy of putting it on the ballot. So, that was, I'm glad to hear some other feedback. I, I wish it was sooner. We may have considered it a little differently before we put it on the ballot, but that's why we came to that conclusion. I did get feedback from Jordan. He was not opposed, just so you know, Jordan and Land Use. Also, when assembling the draft charter, I left out a sentence, which I-
Opposed to what?
Sorry?
You said opposed to what?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I misspeak? No, I spoke with Jordan about the, the notion of combining planning and zoning.
He's not for it.
He, he, I asked him if, if, if-
Okay, so let's not speak for what Jordan-
I did ask. I did, I did go to him. Okay, okay. If, if there was something subsequent, I spoke with him in, in two thousand twenty-four. Anyway, okay. So, the other thing I was going to mention was the, we left out a sentence in the section three oh one that I think will get covered by the Board of Selectmen potentially, which was just left out of the draft by an edit mistake. So, we'll, we'll talk about that. But again, if there's-
We'll talk when you-
Yeah, when, when, when the Board of Selectmen goes through the process, if they want us to do, yeah. Absolutely, right. That's all I wanted to say. And again, I'll answer questions about what we did during our process and the votes that we took.
But we won't be answering them tonight.
No, 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 offline.
Which is a public hearing.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we have other people here who have attended, and I'm hoping they will get up and talk. Does anybody else like to speak on the Charter?
Cindy Harrison, Jeremy Swamp Road. I think what you need to consider very carefully, each commission has its own focus. I think we've touched on some things of, they are now statutorily required to do education. I think all of them will admit they take that seriously, and it is time-consuming. By combining them, you're going to ask them to do that twice. But more importantly, I think we need to remember the focus. The focus of planning is to plan for the town, as a newbie, the P O C D. That is our biggest document of where we are going forward. As you all know, I spent time up in Hartford, and yes, some of them are combined. And the feedback that I heard consistently was when they're combined, because of the way that zoning has to roll, planning gets put aside. And the P O C Ds, while they get done because statutorily they need to be done, they don't get done with the focus that our good folks in planning take seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an open mic over there. Would anybody else like to speak? Will, would anybody else like to speak for or against changes in the Charter?
I have one more thing.
Sure. It was close, Bob. It was close, three times.
This is going to be real quick.
That's okay.
I just noticed in the language that we're possibly considering taking the annual town meeting from a shall to a may. I'll admit, I haven't read through all the text, so I may be speaking out of turn, but any time where we're taking something to a may, taking away a potential town meeting where somebody, where our citizens have the right to speak and put forward ideas, that concerns me a little bit. I think it's hard sometimes. I know we have a lot of commitments here. We have to come to Town Hall quite often, but we have to remember we're serving the town, and we're serving the people, and any opportunity that they have to come before us and give us their input is a good thing. Thank you.
I, I think that results in the fact that there's nobody at the town, annual town meeting. So, you may want to call John Michaels on that. Okay, I'll start the process one more time. Would anybody else like to? No, you can speak again, Bob. I'm okay with it, just so long as we don't, I don't want people to go away and regret not, you know, you're here, and I appreciate everybody taking their time to address the board on this public hearing. And you're truly addressing not just the board, but also the public, and hopefully those out there who will see this meeting, it's being recorded, will also learn something. And of course, we can take comments to the Board of Selectmen through emails and other communications, but this is our, our public hearing. I see, there's two, you, would you like to speak on anything over there? Would you like to?
I have one comment.
That would be great. No, really, I encourage, we encourage this. Otherwise, it's all going, you know, we're not going to make a good decision.
Bob Engel, on Lakewood Road in Southbury. I, I guess one of the things that stood out to me, a very minor point, and could be just the wording of it, was strategic planning has always been something I've, you know, kind of focused on, maybe part of the planning process overall. But the way the strategic planning process was described in, in the section tended to suggest that it just, that it may be reviewed, you know, as needed. Whereas, in my mind, I think a strategic plan is very important, and a strategic plan must be reviewed at least annually, and then changed and adjusted as needed. Again, it's just maybe a wording process, but the way I read the wording is that the, the Board of, the first selectmen may choose, not choose, to review and change and discuss the strategic plan. And I guess I was just looking for wording that was much more specific.
Okay. So I'll start the, the final closing or process. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing on the Charter revisions? Would anybody else like to get up and speak at this public hearing on the Charter revisions? And I'll call it one third, last, third and last time. Would anybody like to get up and speak about the Charter revision? Again. Bob? Okay, okay. Very good. Then we will close the public hearing. We will have it on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen's meeting for discussion. Other information is coming in to us via email. So I think we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Get home before the big storm.